We'll call the meeting door, if those willing and able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
As to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody ready? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with your additions?
Second.
Randy and Katie? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to the public forum. Deb, is there anybody?
No.
Okay. Nothing under number five presentation? Move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Marcy, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie or Amy? Amy. Okay. Under the consent agenda, I would like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for the donation of $100 to the Wellness Room, and Coborn's Inc. donation of 1,592 to the, from the school's reward program. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number seven, financials. 7.1 Review Elementary Budget Year-to-Date. Jackie?
Okay, it's pretty self-explanatory. You have the budget, expenditures, and the balances left. I tied this out to UFRAS, I tied it out to what PMA has, and I tied it out to what Klaus Anderson has. So all those three resources are tied out every month. That's about all I have to say.
Couple of key numbers in there. The construction contingency has about 700,000, so that's for different things that are unaccounted for. So we do have still a very healthy contingency. And that's after doing the weight room addition and some of the other things that we did this fall. So that's kind of where that's at. But so far, we've spent 13 million, so there's about another 16 million or so that will be paid out through the project.
Have we heard anything about that one bid that was off or that they were going to check into? It was for, I think it was, one of the contractors had bid low.
Oh, the contractor will be, they'll be fulfilling their contract.
Okay.
Yep. The Facility Steering Committee did discuss that, and we never did bring that to the full board. We can talk a little bit about that during the Facility Steering Committee report.
Okay, that's a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.11, Review Elementary Building Bills. Does anybody have a question for Jackie on the new elementary building bills? Any questions? Again, that's a non-action item. We'll move on to 7.1.2, Approved Treasurers' Report for Elementary Building Bond for September.
And this just as a reconciliation of the bond account. Still the cash balance at 16.8 million.
Okay.
If you went back to that construction budget sheet, the first report, that also shows that we're looking to earn just over $500,000 in interest on all this money. So that's also put into, back into the project as dollars we can use. So that's part of the budget, so.
Has PMA given us any information as far as how things are looking with the markets the way they are? Do you know?
They're not looking very good.
They're not looking very good.
No.
We get a monthly report from them. I mean, their work in it is, but not real good right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report for Elementary Building Bond for September?
So moved.
Second.
Lance, do you have the first, or did Brad?
Brad.
Brad, and then Lance. Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor to approve the Treasurers' Report for Elementary Building Bond for September, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.2 Review Budget Year-to-Date.
Okay, the budget year-to-date looks fine. We're at 23% last year. At this time, we're at 26%. I'm going to be doing a budget amendment in December once the audit's done, and once I know what the service funding is all going to be, and there'll be quite a few changes.
Just, that's the coronavirus relief dollars that we got federally and from the state for dealing with COVID. We've got almost a half a million dollars that wasn't in the budget that we, that's what the budget adjustment will be.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the budget year-to-date? Any questions? Hearing none, that's a non-action item. Move on to 7.3, Approved the Treasurers' Report for September 30, 2020. Any questions? Any questions? Okay, Jackie, you want to?
No, it's, it's fine. There's no questions. It's fine.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the Treasurers' Report?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Lance?
Brad.
Sorry. Okay. All those in favor to approve the Treasurers' Report for September 30, 2020, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, Approve Regular Bills for October. Any questions?
Act Two.
Okay.
The Pipestone Historical Society and the Pipestone Publishing both worth consult and service fees? Is that, what would that be for?
Pipestone Historical Society, is that $3,000?
Yes.
You would have to ask one of the principals up. It's for whatever we pay for them.
I think we pay them yearly just for field trips and different types of things. And consultant is just where Jackie codes it. It's kind of where it fits in.
That's just object 305, and it just, it'll say the same on both of those. Pipestone Publishing is always quoted to 305. It's just purchase services. The way UFRAS will say, if there's not another object code for it, you use 305. But those are basically for historical society. We pay that 3,000 every year, like Kevin said, it's for field trips, and I don't know for sure what else. Excuse me?
Pipestone Publishing would be at.
Right, right, yeah.
But it's just coded up there.
Right.
To object 305. And then what happens if you don't put a different description in there? It just defaults to. Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve regular bills for October?
So moved.
Katie? Do I have a second?
Second.
Marcy? All those in favor to approve regular bills for October signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to eight, Board Forum and Information, Board Reports and Updates.
I finally got done with Phase Three training after my fourth time of trying to go to it. So I'm going to be like Randy and be up there at doing all four of them.
We can get the free lunch at MSBA Conference.
Yeah, exactly.
They better have a conference this year.
Yeah, I know. So, yes, but it was, Deb did very, she rescheduled me, I don't know how many times for that thing because of snow, rain, COVID. I don't remember what was all. But I got it done. It was really good. They did two nights over Zoom. I think each night was like two and a half hours, but it was really good.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Well, the Facility Steering Committee met this past week, and we toured the facility again. And it's really coming along. Bill Bourne will be here again after the meeting to take everybody on a tour. They've got heat inside now.
Oh, good.
So it should be warm. They are enclosed on the outside so they can continue bricking this time of the year. They need it, what did he say, 45, 50 degrees?
Yeah. It has to be certain temp for the, all that to.
For the mortar and stuff, to be able to keep going. It's impressive. Once you get in there now, there's a lot of walls up, and it's, it's really starting to take shape.
Yep.
Lance, Randy, either one of you got anything?
I mean, we met briefly just to talk about that contractor. And we were able to work through that with the assistance of Tyler and Klaus Anderson. And with their recommendation, we just went ahead and moved forward. And the contractor said that they would fulfill the contract. So at this point, we're just on track for the same timelines.
Yep.
Well, I was just impressed with the building, and we didn't do a whole lot, but look around and watch out for owls.
Owls? There's an owl flying around in there.
They haven't seen it this week, so we're thinking it got out. But it was an owl trapped in there that added for some excitement for a couple of workers.
Yep.
I just, I'd like to add too that the footings for the weight fitness room addition over here will be going in shortly. And then they will be putting up the walls for that in January. So there will be some work out front here. That'll be, that'll be going on, so that'll be an additional area. Also, Sioux Valley Electric has a grant and will be putting in an electric charging station for electric vehicles. And it'll be in the new parking lot, and won't be at any cost to the district. But they do have some things, and they were looking for a public place to install one and ask, so we kind of looked over it, and just going to be one of those things. So that'll be taken care of, and they'll work with ISG and Klaus Anderson to do that. And then we really aren't, we've got some budget items. We've got some furnishing dollars that we want to kind of know where that all comes in. And with furnishings, and then technology. Those things are kind of a little bit of an area that we need to finalize. So we're not moving forward with any other remodeling, because the one other area was like the fifth grade area and some remodeling back in there. But we have to make sure that our budget is in, in place before we do anything. So we're kind of putting that on hold. No other things right now. We're looking at kind of what our budget is, is probably going to be about right. We won't be able to do much else as of right now, but we'll wait to see. I think the furnishings we'd like to have in, in December. And then at the same time, we'll get the technology budget all aligned. So we should have a pretty good idea of our remaining budget, because we also know that in the end, we're going to probably want to redo the roads, because they're beat up by the construction. So we'll probably want to do some things there. And then we have this other parking lot here that has, we probably will want to do something. Resurface that. So we've got some things that we're keeping an eye out kind of as we come to the end here, so. And I also, Brown and Hill were set to be demolished when this was done. We will probably wait with taking those down until we know the COVID situation is over. Because with the additional 85,000 square feet and Brown and Hill, if we have to do this again next year, we'd be able to bring everybody in. We'll have enough space for everybody. So spread them out real good, for the most part.
Yep. And then one, one thing with the weight room addition. Those trees that are there will be saved. They are getting moved so that we don't lose those trees. They're a nice sized tree, a beautiful tree, so we're not just going to pull them out and throw them away. They, they are getting moved.
Yep.
Anything else?
Negotiations committee met. We met with Secretarial, Custodial, and Paragroup, and Rudolph Bus Service, and the library and city. So we have a couple of proposals to review, and then we're meeting again tomorrow to look over those and then continue discussions.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to number nine, Administrators' Reports. Number 9-1, Superintendent's Board Report.
Enrollment is up one from last month, so we, we are maintaining what we have. We have had a few more go with some distance learning options. We kind of have that. I think there's one or two that are coming back from distance learning. But for the most part, it seems like, if anything, people move more into that than, but we're, right now, our numbers are okay. We have the two elementary teachers that are serving that, and then middle school, high school staff are serving the distance learners for the, for the middle school and high school. Today, we brought back ninth graders for three days a week. We, we would like to move with sixth graders coming in every day, but we're, we have to wait for our numbers to, to go down a little bit in the community for us to move to, to that. But so hopefully here by, in November, we'll be able to, to look at doing a little bit, having kids in a little bit more. Mr. Strasser is also trying to work a plan that will bring in the high school students in for a third day in their core areas, the math, science, and English classes. So we are looking and trying to move more kids in if we can. We just got to do it carefully, and right now, our numbers are high in the community, but we don't have any spread in the school. So that's why we're able to stay in our current model. Department of Health and the local county are saying we're okay. But that's why we're cautious with, with any infections, and people are doing a good job of quarantining and not coming sick. And a couple of the cases we've had of just, you know, we got to go back 48 hours, nobody knew. So again, that's, that's kind of where that, where we're at with our enrollment. I did attach the social media report from Social School for EDU. This just kind of shows a little bit of how much of our Facebook and how many followers we have on Instagram and Twitter, and what some of the highlights were of that. And then they had some information showing kind of where we're at in terms of other school districts and their size, and we seem to be, you know, the, the social media campaign seems to be working out very well. And then we just have a few things. We're just trying to get those pictures, and I know Deb does a lot kind of coordinating with them. But, but overall, I think we've had some pretty good response. I don't know if you guys have got any comments on our social media initiative, or?
I think it's all been really positive.
I agree.
I like kind of the routine of things. Every day seems to have a theme or something that you can share and like. But did they have any recommendations as far as trying to get it even better than what it is, or?
No, they just, they just kind of keep after it, and you know, you get some of those, you know, things that are really popular, and that just spreads things out a little bit more, so. And then just a reminder to use Proud Arrows hashtag when you put stuff on Twitter, so. But there's a few other suggestions they had. But overall, that's, that's kind of where that's going.
Okay. Doggone Kevin, or you?
Um.
Wind tower and solar field.
Yeah, we put out an RFP on the solar field, so we should be getting those in here by the end of this week. And then the Facility Maintenance Committee will get together, kind of go through them, and analyze if this is something we want to do and want to pursue. So I was hoping we could have had it on the October meeting, but it looks like it'll be on the November board meeting of where we're going with the solar field and the turbine.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Kevin? Any questions for Kevin? Hearing none, we'll move on to 9-2, Principals' Report. Tony, would you like to start?
Good evening, everybody. The first thing I just wanted to talk about is, I know Mr. Enerson talked about furnishings. So four of our elementary teachers and myself went to Waverly, Iowa on Friday to go to the Premier Furniture's showroom. And so we were able to go there, and we spent about four and a half hours, quote unquote, kicking the tires, so to speak, checking out different furnishings, and kind of looking at what we would like in the classrooms, all the different other learning areas, the flex learning areas, our media center, and cafeteria, and that kind of stuff. So they had a plethora of things for us to look at and check out. So we found that very useful, and we're really excited, and can't wait to see what they put together for us for that. Also, we're, I just wanted to say that we're staying pretty healthy in our elementary buildings, and we're happy we can still go to school every day and keep that going up. Our changes in the pickup line and our drop-off line that we did at Brown have been going very well. It seems to be working quite well, actually, and better than what we had before. And the other thing is, is our staff is just ready to do conferences this Thursday and next Thursday, and we're doing Zoom and, and phone conferences this fall just because of the rise in numbers of COVID. So we felt as a staff that was the probably best route to do that, so. And that's about it.
Any questions for Tony? Any questions for Cory? Hearing none, we'll move on to Mr. Strasser.
Hello, everyone. The two things I was going to bring up, Ms. Barman just talked about conferences, and we are only doing middle school conferences on the 29th and then November 5th. So we've been able to kind of push our, our high school conferences out because of the block schedule that we're on. So we're going to do middle school only. It's a mix of, of virtual and in-person. So our teachers are communicating how they want to, to offer that to our, our parents and students. And then we will follow our middle school conferences with high school conferences on November 19th. It's another Thursday night. So that's right about that four-week timeframe, and we felt that was appropriate for where we want to have quality communication with our parents. So that's what we have in that area. And then I just wanted to follow up. We did bring ninth grade in. It is amazing when you add another 90 kids in the morning as they're coming in. The volume change, you've got to get used to. Our middle school kids are actually fairly quiet right away in the morning. And by 8 o'clock, they're all ready to just go and, and get towards their classrooms. You throw in those ninth graders, I was like, man, it's, it definitely feels louder and just more full. And that was a good thing. So I think overall, the day went well. You know, you figure a little this, a little that, because we had to move some rooms here and there to accommodate. But all in all, I thought it was a pretty good day, and I'm just thankful that we could get them in for this third day. And we'll see how they respond. If you think about it, tomorrow will be the first time they've had two days in a row of education since March. So looking forward to kind of that, that process there. So those are, those are the main things. And yeah, we're always looking at our safety measures, and then how else can we bring, you know, whether it's a sixth grader or some high school options in. And I think we've got some good, good things going, but as Mr. Enerson said, we have to have our numbers down, and that's totally understandable. So just always trying to plan and be prepared for what we can do next. That's all I have.
So with, with doing some sports now, how is that going with the kids?
Well, I think when you look at, at high school, that's, that's always a big part of the whole. And having that available always brings a little more excitement to, to high school and, and what we're doing, and, and kind of brings a little more life into kids. Because just that extra element of play or activity. So I think that's, that's been a positive. And yeah, I'm glad we're able to, to keep participating. And I know we're done with tennis and cross country, maybe a little earlier than normal, but they still got seasons, and I think it's, I think it's a good thing so far.
So how has it been over social distancing and that kind of stuff?
Well, when you look at, if you're talking about the actual practices and.
Well, just the practices as well as the spectator portion of it?
Yeah, I, I don't watch practices much at all. I do know in my conversations with Mr. Zolner that the coaches are really emphasizing the distancing and, and the cleanliness side of, of the activities. So I believe they're, they're doing the things that we know are, are good to be doing to maintain the healthy components. And then when you look at our attendance and what we're allowed to bring in, I believe parents have been very good about coming in and out when they're supposed to. And if you look around the gym, for example, the times I've watched, we've only had a couple of guns. I think parents are, are doing a pretty good job of distancing and following those expectations. So, and we've only had one football game. So hard to get a, you know, comprehensive view, but so far, I believe those things are going pretty well. I know kids would like to go, go to activities, but that's just not the reality right now.
Right. Okay. Any questions for Cory? Anybody have any questions for Cory? Hearing none, we'll move on to 9-3. Melanie?
Good evening. Since we last met, we held an ACT at the Hiwaka Lodge for 41 students, and it was a beautiful day. And we went out without a pitch, which was very nice. We also held a makeup test for three students who were unable to test the day of the test. On October 7th for our PLC, we had Southwest Mental Health do a presentation for our certified staff and paras, just on burnout, self-care, just to give them some tips. I'm also part of the Southwest West Central Curriculum Leaders Group, and so it's a job-like group. And everyone's very focused on the social emotional health of their staff as well as their students. So one way that we felt we could do something with our staff was to have that communication. I participated in our nurse interviews, which was a fun and eye-opening experience. Again, there was a Southwest West Central Perfume Lead Leaders Team Meeting. That's a really good time for people like me to network. Had a lot of good discussion about what people are doing in their buildings and how their schedules are going. Our District Assessment Coordinator trainings began, so this is the beginning of testing season. Depending, you know, whatever happens in our future, they are training us as if we would have a normal testing season in the spring. And then I'm also serving as an instructional coach this year, rather than just the program lead for the instructional coaches. So it's been fun to be able to get into a few more classrooms of our brand-new teachers. They get 180 minutes of coaching each month. And so it's been very rewarding, and as well as time, it takes a lot of time to do that as well as the rest of my duties, but it's great to see the impact that instructional coaching is having on our new staff. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for Melanie? Any questions?
Maybe just, we were slated to have another early dismissal here this, this week, and we're not going to do that. We, we're working out whatever we can. But the one in November, we will do, because again, if you recall, when our elementary teachers need to do some staff development, they're, they're here every day, so we can't, like the distance learning days, we work around the middle school and the high school teacher schedules, but we don't, so we're prioritizing the, the needs for the elementary staff. So the November early scheduled early dismissal in November will happen, but not, not the early dismissal this week, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to 10, Discussion Items. 10.1, Second Rating of Certified Staff Seniority List. Any objections from any of the bargaining units on that one?
Nope, we have not heard anything. Haven't had to make any corrections, so I recommend you approve. I guess this should be an action. I guess this should be in action, because we have to approve these, so.
Yep. Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of the certified staff seniority list?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 10.2, the second reading of a paraprofessional seniority list for 2020-2021. Anything on that one, Kevin?
Same thing, nope.
Okay.
No issues.
Do I have a motion to approve the paraprofessional seniority list?
So moved.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Lance?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the paraprofessional seniority list for 2020-2021, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 10.3, the second reading of the secretary custodian and AP seniority list for 2020-2021.
No changes there, that's ready to go to.
Okay. I will make motion to approve the seniority list for the secretary custodian and AP for 2021, 2020, and 2021. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brad, seconds. All those in favor of the second reading of the secretary custodian and AP seniority list for 2020-2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 10.4, Minnesota State High School League response.
We drafted a letter after the last meeting to send to the Minnesota State High School League requesting them to rethink how they assessed our fees, that we will be getting a bill in November and February for. They did it by the six classifications. We asked that they do this per pupil, to be fair. When you look at it, and there's been more analysis done, and a lot of superintendents have shared things with the league, basically, the very, very large school districts are paying about $6, $7 per pupil, and where smaller schools like us are paying $30 per pupil. So we just said this is inequitable. They did send this letter back saying they are going to be looking at it. They're having three listening sessions, and so they are rethinking or looking at it. I did sit in on the Friday listening thing. They really didn't say much about it, so I don't know if they're... Will we continue as superintendents? As the School Board Association, MSBA, and also the MRA, Rural Education Association, all are continuing to have talks with the league board of directors to rethink this, so we'll see what happens with it, but we'll know next month when we get our bill. You'll either approve it or not, so.
So what would happen if we do not approve it?
Not exactly sure. I know we're a member of the league, and it's... The league has got bills to pay, so.
Right.
If they're going to assess everybody, we need to pay. I suppose you can withhold for a while, but then they're not going to sanction us, and our kids wouldn't be able to participate in activities because they won't be Minnesota State. I mean, I don't know for sure how far this will go, but you know, if you really play it out, and if we don't pay our fees or pay our dues to the league, then we can't participate in league activities, so. And there isn't really... I don't know how it works being an independent.
Well, I agree to that, but I just find it such an inequitable number.
Right.
That I got to think there's going to be more than us that are really going to question whether or not we want to pay this.
Yep. We are not alone.
Yep. There is a lot of push from other school districts, too.
Southwest Minnesota seems to have the strongest voice in this. I don't know what they're doing up north, but I know this area of the state, everybody's... The Big South Conference sent in, I mean, you were... There's a whole conference we sent in. There's been schools all over Southwest. We sent on the board. There's been superintendents who've written letters to the league, so they're hearing, and like I said, they're having these three listening sessions, so.
Yep.
We understand they need $3.2 million.
Right.
It's... They have to have that, it's just how are they assessing those fees, and we're saying, you know.
Yeah, let's just do it.
I think you can do this a little bit differently.
Everybody.
Right. So.
Okay. So that's a non-acumen.
And it's, yeah, and it's not a huge amount of money. I mean, it's $7,000 is our portion. I mean, it's really not the amount of money, it's more the principle of what are they doing, so. Because if they do it the other way, our bill will probably be $5,000, so it isn't like we're saving huge amounts of money and that this is a big bill, so.
Well, and I think it sets a precedent of what they're going to do in the future.
Yeah.
I mean, you let them do it now, what are they going to do next year?
Right. And they did talk, you know, superintendents used to make up most of the board of directors, and now superintendents have kind of delegated that to activities directors and coaches and other things that are on the league board of directors. That probably will change. I think superintendents will be saying, nope, you do not have permission, AD, to be on this board. A superintendent will represent our region, so. I think you're going to see a shift in who's serving on the board of directors, and it'll become back to probably more superintendents.
Okay.
Which, if we're making all the noise, we better be willing to put on our leadership shoes for that, too.
Right.
Because the league hasn't gotten into this financial state just because of COVID. They've been going that way for about five years, and there's some things that I think they need to rethink.
Yep. Okay. Move on to 10.5, discuss dates for canvassing the election results.
We have, as you know, a school board election on December 3rd that is handled by the county, so it is kind of nice, but we will need to canvas that, and I know, Deb, there was some concern that there might be some... Might take a while to count all the votes. I think Pipestone County does a pretty good job, I'm not too concerned about that, but we probably want to maybe look at... Would the 12th, November 12th, Thursday work for everyone? And I've talked with Jeff, and I think also we could maybe have a work session to go over our strategic plan and some of the timelines that we have there, so we could try... Because you know how long that meeting's going to take to canvass the election.
Right.
I'll be gone then, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll be gone.
You'll be gone, too? Wednesday or?
I'll be gone that whole week.
Okay.
Can't do Wednesday. Can't do Wednesday, the 11th.
Can't, it's Veterans Day, never mind.
Right.
Your day is Thursday. Or Friday, but I don't want to meet on a Friday night unless Lance is around.
I mean, if that's all you're going to do, you're going to just get along.
Yeah.
You know, if you're going to do other things.
Right. So then we probably should just canvass the votes if Brad... Lance can't be here.
Yeah.
And then plan a work session after.
We'll do it in November, regular meeting. Do it after the meeting.
Okay. So do I have a motion? What's that? Seven again, I would assume.
Take five minutes, you'll be done.
I know.
Won't take very long.
I know. But I... I should be here by seven. So can I have a motion to have our meeting on November 12th at 7:00 for canvassing the election results?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Yep. Okay. All those in favor of canvassing the election results on the 12th of November at 7:00, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11, board action, retirement letter from Terry Klosterman, school nurse.
I'd just like to... Terry's served the school district for 20 years as the school nurse, and she is going to retire here the end of December, so congratulations to her, big decision, and thank her for her service to the school district.
Yep. Thank you, Terry. Anybody have any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the retirement letter from Terry Klosterman, school nurse?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor of accepting the retirement letter from Terry Klosterman, school nurse, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.2, approve continuing ed committee.
The continuing ed committee's role is to review teacher... It's like a peer review process for relicensor, so when a teacher needs to renew their license, this is a committee of teachers and administrators that review those hours that people turn in every five years or whatever, or wherever they're at in their renewal, so. We need to recognize it as a board, recommend you approve.
Okay. Any other questions, Kevin, on that? Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the continuing ed committee?
So moved.
Second.
Katie and Marcy, either one. Okay. All those in favor of approving the continuing ed committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.3, declaring wrestling equipment obsolete.
Got some old uniforms and warm-up jackets that need to go, so.
Any questions? Any questions? Do I have a motion to declare wrestling equipment obsolete?
So moved.
Lance, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad. All those in favor of declaring wrestling equipment obsolete signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 11.4, public library board.
The negotiations committee met with a subcommittee of the city to review our 1991 agreement that shows the makeup of the public library board, and the city has moved forward with their names to serve on the public library board. The city has two, the school has two, and then there's one appointed by the mayor that needs to be approved by the school district and the city council. And so the mayor's appointee is Nathan Lamb to the public library board, and I would recommend the board approve Mr. Lamb as the mayor's appointee. And then we need to, right now, Amy is the board appointee to the public library board. The school also needs to appoint another member to that, and I would recommend Melanie Wellness for the other appointee position, so that the library board will now be in compliance with our agreement with the city.
Okay. Are there any questions about either appointee? Any questions? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the mayor's appointee of Nathan Lamb to the public library board?
So moved.
Brad, do I have a second?
Second.
Or Lance?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
No, Brad motioned and Lance seconded.
Oh, okay. All those in favor approving mayor appointee Nathan Lamb signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.42, approve the school board appointee of Melanie Wellness. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Katie?
Second.
And Marcy. Okay. All those in favor to approve the school board appointee of Melanie Wellness to the library board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Randy, do I have a second?
Second.
Katie? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.